That's what he said.
I will call the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Jameson, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Here.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
White?
Here.
Trelka?
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no, we have an agenda. Public comments, do you have anybody in the boardroom who would like to provide public comment? Do you have anybody online or on Zoom that would like to provide public comment? Claims and payments, Mr. Perry?
This week's expenditures total one million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-five cents. The larger expenditure is secondary road sixteen thousand, two thirty-seven. We had an insurance renewal, uh, claim in there, conservation seventeen thousand, eight thirteen, maintenance fifty-seven thousand, four eighty-seven. We had IT at twenty-two thousand, two sixty-nine, and finally the Sheriff's Department, one eighty-five, one seventy-six. Everything looked normal.
Okay, this is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Jameson, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes. Project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nikles, County Engineer. Construction is going well on the roadway projects and the bridge projects. I did want to talk to you for a few minutes this morning about a bus tour. We've been emailing and talking about that for a few weeks now, and I wanted to firm up a date, and I was, have talked with Met Transit, the director there, and he suggested that he could loan us a bus with a driver for two or three hours. I suggested a time after a board meeting, a Tuesday morning, for example, from ten AM until noon, or ten AM until one PM, or however long it takes, either next Tuesday or the last Tuesday of the month, July twenty-seventh. Are those dates acceptable, or?
Sure. Does anybody have a preference? They're both good for me.
They're both fine for me.
Craig?
I don't know, I've got a new doctor's appointment, so it depends on you.
Tom, Linda, any preference on dates?
Yeah, I'm in communication with Kathy, I sent her an email back yesterday, so we're on a wait and see.
Okay.
So I told her to go ahead and schedule what's the best date for everybody.
Both work.
What's that, Linda?
Both work for me.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, last time, and I can't remember the reason why, and I think it was, we had to go on the, uh, the highway with the Met Transit, which normally doesn't go. We had a sheriff's car with us. I don't recall the reason for that, you might want to check with the sheriff. I remember they picked us up, we left the North Cedar area and was on that off ramp, they picked us up. I don't know if it's because bus moves too slow or what it was.
I will speak with Director Sturch and Sheriff Thompson, and we'll get that worked out. Let me propose then that the first choice would be July twenty-seventh, the last Tuesday of the month. That'll be the day before Ragbri comes through the area. I'll talk with Director Sturch, and then I've had several places suggested I would like to stop, take you to the Cedar River Bridge Replacement, the Gresham Road Bridge Replacement, and then the Grandy Road Grading Project, a small bridge crew project that was done in the last year, one of our paving projects from the last couple of years, so you can see some of the safety improvements we've been working on. And then also probably either the Bennington Trust Bridge or the Wheeler Road Bridge. Those are the two bridges that are closed in the northeast portion of the county. Not sure if we can get the bus up to the Bennington Trust area, but we'll certainly check that out before we. So I'll prepare a list, so you have a map and know where we're going and some information about the projects, and then we'll get that same information to the Met Transit.
All right, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Be in touch, thank you.
Any others? Rory?
Good morning, Board, Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. Just wanted to share with you, we were able to turn the solar system on over at the Pine Crest facility last Tuesday. So that system is up and running, all seven systems are up and running. We are still working on the communications as far as being able to pull that system up online to see what it's producing. That is tied in, it's just I cannot see that yet, so once I have that, I will present all seven of those to the board, and then I'll be working with Kim to, and Eagle Point, to incorporate that onto our website, so the public can also see that as well. The second item I wanted to bring to your attention is our temporary parking pass procedure here at the courthouse. We implemented a new procedure to where we are asking anybody who is assigned a temporary pass, they will have to bring that back to us monthly. So every month, they'll have to come back down. If they still meet the five pieces of criteria that's listed out in the ordinance, that pass can be reissued to them for another month. So essentially what we're doing away with is the long-term temporary passes. We've also added a color code to each month, so it's easy visible out in the parking lot, so each month we'll have a color assigned to it. So we hope that that will simplify the process and allow us to better manage it. So, any questions?
Rory, does that change anything in the ordinance, any language that you mentioned?
It does not. We still are going to be following the criteria that's listed. It's just more of an internal managing of the process, so.
It's exciting that the solar is all online.
Very.
It's a really great investment for this community that's going to pay dividends for the environment and financially for years to come.
Very much so. I look forward to bring some more information to you as we're able to tap into that system and see the production, so.
Thanks, Rory.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay, let's move on to approval of the minutes for July sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. Consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Jameson, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes. Item seven A is a resolution that the lowest regional bid received from Limbo for computerized maintenance management system with a bid of six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars be approved and for the chair to sign the contract conditional to the receipt of certificate of insurance as recommended by Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. It looks like we had three bids, Dude Solutions, nine seven, or nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, Limbo, six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, and Upkeep, seven thousand, two hundred dollars.
Correct, again Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. Just to give you a little back history with the building maintenance, several years ago, we did start using a work order system through our New World Financial Management System. We gave it, I would say, our best attention, and we tried our hardest to make the system work. It just did not meet our needs, particularly in the preventative maintenance realm. We were able to issue work orders. Reporting was somewhat difficult, and it definitely was not a lack of trying from both the IT department and our department. So we made the decision at budget time last year to scrap that and ask for a new work order system. So with much review of systems that are out there, we found that this one will fit our needs. It is a mobile system, meaning that our staff literally can be out on the job site, wherever they're at, they'll receive our work orders, they'll be able to input work orders. All employees will have a link that they can go to to initiate a work order. We'll be able to show reporting on that in many different aspects. We feel it's a great management tool for us. When you have multiple facilities, sometimes you can get pretty buried. It's going to allow us to really improve on the management of our staff, and I believe our staff is going to end up liking it as well. So just to give you a couple of examples, if you're working on a piece of equipment, you're going to be able to pull that equipment up on the system and see anything and everything that's ever been done to that piece of equipment. You'll be able to pull up vendors that might be associated with it, parts that might be associated with it. It's going to help expedite the completion of those work orders, and it's going to really put a valuable tool in our staff's hands, along with management. It does have a great preventative maintenance aspect to it. It, spare parts inventory, which, you know, we look at critical spare parts in our department, things that have a great deal of lead time, so we'll be able to better manage that as well. Just vendor management, when we go out for proposals, we can build this system to include all the vendors that might be associated. So it really will be a great asset to our department and allow us to better manage our staff and the priorities of these work orders based on specifics that we put out there as priorities. The other nice thing, the employees that are initiating these work orders can see the status as it goes. They can pull up that work order and see where it's at, if they're waiting on a piece of equipment or a part. That person that assigned that work order will be able to look that up at any time. Each of our staff will have a, be able to access this on their cell phone and on their desktop, so great mobility. This particular company, we did a lot of research on them. They have a pretty impressive reference list of companies that they do provide services for. They, just go through my list here. The other thing that, you know, we've talked about for several years, and that's succession planning with regards to whoever the departments are, succession is a real thing, and it's an important thing as a department head, that they be looking at that as something that should be a critical piece in their role. God forbid something were to happen, you know, that I wasn't able to come to work. I really feel that building this system would allow somebody to really jump in that seat and get a good history on what our department's about and what we've done. So I do think, following our twenty twenty-eight vision, this will be a great asset to our department with regards to that as well.
Move to approve.
Is that a month or a yearly?
That is a yearly subscription, yes.
Rory, how much did you budget for that?
I budgeted five thousand dollars, and to give you a little background on that, too, if you recall, IT also budgeted the same amount. So our goal going into this was to find a system that we could share, thinking that that would be more efficient. What we learned is there's really, there are two different worlds. When you're looking at IT and facility management, there really isn't a system out there that captures the needs that the IT department would really need with regards to what they do, with regards to computers and things like that. So if we wanted to use it just for a basic work order system, I think it would work okay for both departments, but I think IT's vision goes a little deeper than that. And so we chose to branch off onto our own and really focus just on the facility management's part of it.
Okay, and then the other question I had, Rory, is you indicated it'll be on your employees' phones.
Are the employee phones all county phones?
Yes, they are.
And is there a security in place? Because I'm assuming you're going to have information on their machinery or equipment in the jail? And as far as anybody getting access to that?
We talked a little about firewalls, they do have firewalls in place. That's something, too, that I'll have to work with IT, just to make sure that we have all the proper safeguards in there. It is a web-based system, so that is something that we will definitely need to work with IT on to make sure that their firewalls and IT firewalls are satisfied.
Okay, have you talked to the sheriff at all about that? On having the equipment in that jail that could be online that somebody could potentially hack and disable?
So the equipment, the physical equipment, it's more so management of that equipment. So like, for an example, if you look at our boiler system over there, what this system would provide to us is any vendor that's associated with us as far as working on that system, any spare parts that we might consider critical, that we need to have on the shelf in order to keep that system up and going. So they wouldn't necessarily be able to tap into that particular piece of equipment, but they could, you know, if somebody were to breach it, they could see our spare parts list, the work that's been completed on that piece of equipment, things like that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it was just a thought. You know, security nowadays are big, especially if you're dealing with the jail. The sheriff would know more about that.
Absolutely.
Rory, what about putting the vehicles on here?
Everything, even another thing I didn't mention, energy usage. We can, which we already do on our own spreadsheets, but this will allow us to input our energy usage for all of our facilities, so at the end of the year, we can deliver a nice report. And what's neat about that is when we do these projects, these energy efficiency projects, you would assume that your usage would go down, which we do see. Now unfortunately, we don't see costs necessarily go down because the rates continue to go up. But what we're focused on is usage, so our rates don't necessarily go up along with that. We kind of stay flatlined as long as we continue to do energy efficiency projects. But yeah, this essentially will be our Bible in maintenance when it comes to inputting information, energy, everything.
Does the contract address, or will there be a policy that if a phone is lost, it'll be immediately disabled?
In our policies currently, there is a, there's some verbiage in there that the county has sole right to that phone. If there's a concern, they can shut down that system. Yeah, and I believe that's the case, right? Yeah.
I will second the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Jameson, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland? Layland, you're muted, Linda. Little?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
About now, Tim.
Oh, sorry, Linda, how was your vote?
Yes.
All right, item eight A is a motion that the personnel requisition for two office specialists, full-time replacement with a start date no sooner than July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. In the treasurer's office, be approved as recommended by Rita Schmidt, County Treasurer. It's been moved and seconded, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Item eight B is a motion that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors authorize and direct the county auditor to cancel outstanding checks through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Item eight C is a resolution to establish Fund One Sixty-Five, American Rescue Plan Fund, in an effort to help account for expenses and revenues related to the bill passed on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, is recommended by James Perry, Finance Director.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Perry?
This is really just establishing a new fund, just a better account for those transactions. So it's going to be a little bit easier on our end, accounting for those, and then it's not going to be within the general fund. So I thought establishing this new fund would just make it a little bit easier, streamline the process.
Keep it cleaner, too, right?
You're exactly right.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, Mr. Jameson, roll call vote.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Item eight D is a resolution to establish a separate fiduciary fund for Consolidated Communications, Fund Seven Sixty-Four, Consolidated Communications, effective July first, twenty twenty-one, in an effort to more accurately account for the Consolidated Communications Agency's fiscal transactions, is recommended by James Perry, Finance Director.
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions?
The only thing I'll say on this is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued GASB eighty-four, which really just gave a little bit more clear guidelines on what fiduciary activities really are. Those are going to be benefiting a different, a separate party. And so when looking at this, it just makes a little bit more sense to pull them out of the general fund and put them in their own separate fund, something extremely similar to the assessor's office, and to better accurately account for their transactions. Effective July one, only because when we establish this fund and create the corresponding line items with everything, they are going to be using the general fund up until a certain point. We're going to kind of flip that switch, so to speak, and then come December, we're going to do a budget amendment. So I just wanted to put July one on, in the resolution, just when we start doing journal entries to account for those transactions, we have to retroactively do it to July one, so.
Okay.
Does it affect anything, James, anything different?
No, the only thing that is going to change is instead of using zero zero one, zero zero eight, which is the general fund, Consolidated Communications Agency, they're going to start using seven six four, zero zero eight. So everything stays the exact same, they're just going to use a different fund.
All right, any other comments or questions? It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Jameson, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Item eight E, discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-nineteen. Josh, you're on, what do you have for us?
Good morning, Board. Doctor Brunnier asked me to provide a brief update on where we're currently at with our COVID-nineteen numbers and our vaccination efforts.
Josh, we're getting a little feedback.
A little feedback?
A lot.
How is that, is that better?
Nope.
All right, just one moment. How is that, Board?
It still seems to be there, but let's give it a shot.
Okay, apologies for that. As I was saying, Doctor Brunnier asked me to give a brief update on where we're at with our COVID-nineteen numbers and our vaccination efforts, as far as the numbers go. As of yesterday morning, we are at sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight positive cases, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine recoveries, percent positivity over the last fourteen days of eight point nine percent, and three hundred and sixteen deaths. We are making some changes to our daily reporting. We'll now be changing the recoveries and death numbers to our weekly reporting to align with changes that the state made effective last week. So they are no longer doing daily updates, so we don't have new numbers to post daily, so we'll be posting those recovery and death numbers weekly instead. As far as our vaccines go, as of this week, sixty point four percent of Blackhawk County residents, eighteen over, have received at least one dose of vaccine, and fifty-seven point four percent of that same group is fully vaccinated. So we're making progress with our vaccinations. We did not quite hit President Biden's goal of seventy percent by the Fourth of July, but we did hit sixty percent. So we are continuing to make progress and continuing our efforts. One thing that we will be doing next week is we'll be holding a vaccination event with targeting Mews for back to school. The twelve and seventeen-year-olds for back to school will be the target audience for that clinic, and we'll be holding that at the Sportsplex. And the Sportsplex has been a great partner for us in finding that effort.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Josh? Does anybody have any further updates?
I just want to give my praise to the county conservation staff. I spent two weeks, or two nights last week camping at Hickory Hills, one of the cabins, with my four nephews. Second year in a row, we've done one of them, and they have a great time every time, and it's just a testament to the remarkable work that our conservation staff does.
All right, I have two items in regard to information and reports from the board, evals. We had talked about evaluations for department heads. I've talked with Amanda a little bit, and one page out of our entire evaluation process is very appealing, and it talks about goals, short term or long term, and I'll forward that to all the board members, and I'll have it on the agenda for next week for discussion. It's short, sweet, and simple. I find that, personally, I find that appealing. The Board of Health, we've only had one applicant, but they want to fill their vacant positions, so we should schedule interviews. Who from the board wants to be involved in the interview process?
Do we have candidates?
We have one, we have one candidate. I had several, I've had two other individuals contact me interested, but neither applied. And... Go ahead, Tom.
I'd like the board maybe even consider putting a supervisor on the health board.
Mike, that's intriguing, apparently that's allowed?
That is allowed, yes. There's a section under three thirty-one that expressly permits that. It's also been, if you look at an article, it's called Ten Rules of Thumb for Local Boards of Health, I believe, by David Vestal. He, it's an interesting concept, but it definitely is permitted, yes.
How's it decided? The other board members decide?
Alan, that's just it, the other, the board member who is applying, or the board members who were applying would have to recuse themselves. You couldn't have any more than two apply because you'd have to have a quorum of the Board of Supervisors in order to make that decision. But I cannot see how you would involve one who was applying her or himself in that decision-making process, or in that voting process.
And I assume it would take a majority of a vote from the board to proceed with something such as this, even... What I'm getting at is should we put it on the agenda for next week?
I don't know if you'd have to, I think what would have to happen is somebody, if there's a board member from this board that wishes to apply to be on one of the other boards, and this isn't just Board of Health, that individual would submit an application just like any other candidate for that board position, and whatever interview process is engaged in would then apply to that individual as well.
Well, that's interesting.
But that individual would recuse himself or herself from that process, from those discussions and from that vote.
Is there anybody on the Board of Supervisors interested? I'm curious. Or do we need a week to think about it?
I just threw it out there, Dan, so why don't we just wait a week or so and see if anybody wants to think about it and so forth? It's not uncommon, there's counties, I know one county above us, has a supervisor that serves on the VA Commission. Years ago, Blackhawk County was looking at that process for our VA Commission, so I think there are counties that have supervisors that serve. So I think there are counties that have supervisors that serve. If you look at the code, it could be a commission, it could be a court, committee. Supervisors have the authority to serve on any of those. I would assume the process would be the same when the name would go up in front of the Board of Supervisors. The individual would abstain, and the rest of the Board would vote. Be just like a normal process.
Interesting.
I would like, Mike, I guess, to do a little bit of research on that, only from this standpoint, Tom, that I wouldn't want any conflict of interest and then votes from a Board of Health position or any other Board to conflict with making it more difficult for the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, there is a spring court ruling on it already, Linda. It's, again, it's... You can do it as a supervisor. The code spells it out.
No, I've seen that. You're correct. You can do it. I just meant to not make it more difficult for us in our decision-making.
Yeah, yeah, obviously. And I'm not saying any Board member wants to do it, it's just a thought, and I think the Board should think about it.
I mean, I guess, you know, we already have a liaison to the Board, and two people can... And even two supervisors can attend those meetings. I like to spread the civic engagement around the community as much as we can and give people an opportunity to get involved. And so we have, you know, one really qualified applicant right now. So I just worry about, even though I don't question that we can legally do this, but I do just see conflict of interest coming up on a fairly regular basis with this kind of setup. So I would not, one, be interested, and I wouldn't be supportive of that. It's not out of any offense to any of my fellow supervisors.
I must...
Dan, watch.
Yes, yes, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just disappointed in the lack of participation from our community on all the boards. I wish we could get more citizens involved.
I agree.
Any other discussion? Let's put this item on the agenda for discussion for next week. Mike, can you do a little research?
You bet. I'll do that. I'll probably be in touch with at least Supervisor Layland, just to make sure I understand what the specific concern is. But yes, I can do that.
Because this applies to many boards, interestingly. All right, any other points of discussion or information from the Board? I'll make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those...